Good evening. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Committee of the Whole Meeting of October 9th, 2017. Thank you to those of you who may have been waiting a few minutes. We are just about five minutes delayed because we were having an enormous celebration with our community with the opening of the Stevenson Performing Arts Center. A year ago at this time, we had the privilege of opening the Franklin Performing Arts Center. Tonight is Stevenson's turn to shine. We would like to thank very much Gary Harper and the entire staff of Stevenson High School for hosting, not only the Board of Education and our administration, but also the community at a wonderful ribbon-cutting and celebratory event. I'd like to pass our congratulations on to the wonderful musicians who performed for us, our instrumental musicians who are performing outside. So if you happen to be driving home this evening, that's what you were watching. And inside, we had some of our vocalists at our choir. Absolutely wonderful. We are so excited to see the final product of our Performing Arts Center and see it in use on its very first night. So again, thank you so much to the Stevenson staff for giving us such a warm welcome. Tonight's meeting is a committee of the whole meeting, and by that, we mean this is what we can term lightly as a discussion-type meeting. There are many items on our agenda this evening that we will have quite a bit of discussion on several of them. However, there will be no votes taken tonight. Any items that the board needs to vote on, and we feel we're ready to vote on at the end of our discussion, will be put onto an agenda for next week at our general meeting or a regular meeting. Votes will be taken at that time. Frankly, if you're looking to see a lot of discussion and a lot of thought process of the Board of Education, this is the right meeting to tune into. This is our committee of the whole. The first item on our agenda is audience communications. If you're with us this evening, you can find the agenda on one of the tables around us. If you're watching from home and you'd like to follow along with your agenda, you can find it on our website, and that is at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to agendas and follow along for the evening. The first item on our agenda this evening is audience communications. I don't have any blue slips. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to participate in audience communications this evening? Seeing none, we're going to go to the next item on our agenda. Item number two is committee of the whole, and I'm going to be turning the meeting over to Mr. Archibald at this time.
Thank you, President Burton. Good evening. Superintendent Portman, I just want to provide a brief update regarding the athletic offering survey that was conducted last spring. Provide a little bit of background similar to what I shared at the study session a couple weeks ago. As many of you know, the LPS has been approached over the past several years about adding sport teams, adding levels of sports and so forth. It's been a position in the district that we have not been in a financial position to be able to add teams when in fact, we have taken a fair number of steps to offset some of our costs and reduce our costs in order to maintain the athletic program that we have currently. It's been a position of our athletic council that sports should only be offered, teams added to, we're able to fund them in a similar manner to what we do with our existing teams. Many of the requests from folks to add teams come with a notion that they'll be fully parent-funded and that it would be affiliated.
Thank you, Fred. Thought I was getting voted off. The idea that the team or program would be affiliated with the district in name only and would be fully funded and be no cost burden to the district, and that's been a position that our athletic council, which includes our athletic directors and building principals and parent representatives, have been opposed to. We think a format like that, as we see it operate in other districts, creates inequity or disparity between the programs. We also believe that there's an inherent lack of institutional control that comes with such an arrangement. So that being said, in light of happier financial times, we had been saying if we were going to add a sport, what we would do first is to conduct a interest survey with students to see what interest there is out there. And so, we did that this past spring. Our areas of focus were to look at MHSA tournament sports. There are three which we do not offer currently: bowling, lacrosse, and downhill skiing. We administered a survey in the first few weeks of May last year, a survey given to students in grade seven through 11. We had 978 students respond. It was sent to their school email accounts. We also provided the information to our parents via email and asked them to contact me directly with any questions that they might have or input that they would like to offer. In summary, and I've met a couple times now with the athletic directors and principals just to review the results, I'll be the first to tell you, since I'm the one that created the survey, it was not a scientific document. But I think when you look at the results of the survey, when you look at the community groups that exist out there today, and when you consider the feedback that we've received from both students and parents in the recent past, it certainly supports a further and deeper look into the possibility of adding bowling and adding lacrosse to our offerings. So with that in mind, what I've asked the athletic directors to do is to begin a cost analysis of what that would be, looking at what are our initial costs, and then what are our ongoing costs, our annual costs from there. And so, we'll work on that. We have a meeting actually coming up later this week to touch base. We also want to look at some different logistics. You know, you've got scheduling, you've got facility use, you have the potential of a Title IX, I'll say issue for lack of a better word. Right now, if the numbers support we're only offering male lacrosse team, then in response to maintain the balance there with respect to Title IX, we'd have to look, if we're not in a position to add a women's lacrosse team based on interest, then what offerings do we have within our athletic program that would satisfy that? So again, I don't know that any of it is insurmountable, but we want to be thorough in our examination of it and to make sure that if we're in a position to add teams, that we're able to do it in a manner that, we want to do it well. And so, we'll continue to garner together that financial information, as well as look through some of the logistical issues, and I'll be happy to report back to the board on our progress in the weeks ahead.
Are there any questions or comments from our administration or members of our board? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. Steve, if any of these were added to our present array of sports, are we looking at league interaction? Is this part of the other teams within our league?
Within the KLA, good question, Mr. Johnson. Within the KLA, not all of the teams offer lacrosse, or all the schools offer lacrosse, but we do have eight of the 14 schools do offer boys' lacrosse, and six of the 14 offer girls' lacrosse. The schools in the current KLA offer bowling. We will pick up two Dearborn schools, in Fordson and Dearborn High, and Belleville, next year. And if they don't offer bowling already, their intent is to offer it with next year. So it would be kind of a perfect storm, if you would.
Any other, yes, Mrs. Bradford?
Speaking of lacrosse, do we have the facilities to, the means to be able to field a team, facilities for lacrosse?
And that's another good question. That would be one of the logistics that we would have to be able to work out. I think initially, we may be looking at a unified team, which would be a single team made up of athletes from all three high schools. That's permitted under the MHSA. But again, with field use in the spring, when you have track out there as well as then multiple soccer teams, that would be a logistical piece that we would have to work out. Our fields are not currently lined for it. That would be the least of our hurdles to get over.
Other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Archibald, you mentioned a united team for lacrosse. I know we had some discussion about the study session about this. And refresh my memory, if you would. What is the number of years that we can have a unified team before we would need to make a decision on splitting that up per school?
Because it's a new offering, we can request permission from the MHSA to have a unified team with all three of our schools up to four years. The guideline is 3,500 students. So like we're now in gymnastics, we have two teams because if you combine all three of our schools, the enrollment's over 3,500. But because this is a new split offering, that 3,500 doesn't count. We could have a unified team with all three for up to four years with permission of the MHSA, and then after that time, we'd have to split into either two or three teams.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? Mrs. Bradford?
I'm sorry. If there was a lacrosse team, when, it would be done in the spring?
Correct. Yes.
And the bowling would be done in winter?
Winter. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Reich.
Anticipation in the 2018-19 school year, or that the logistics are being still worked out?
Our goal would be to at least be able to add something in the 18-19 school year. Certainly depends on what we find out and the cost implications and some of the logistics and how well we're able, if we're able to do it all. But we'll take a look at that.
Okay. Thanks. Other questions or comments from the board?
One thing that I would like to add is an enormous thank you to you and to the athletic council. Thank you to our parents, our community, for being very, very patient through a number of extraordinary measures in account on the whole and certainly in public education. When we were taking such things, as parents always ask me about classrooms, we couldn't be adding athletics. We just couldn't justify that. But we are absolutely thrilled to finally be in a position where we can answer this ongoing request, and it's certainly justified that we have the number of athletes and the interest in our community for both lacrosse and bowling. So thank you so much for the work that you've been doing on this. I know I've fielded questions for years. I know, because I was one of those, I was one of those sports that still have more of parents who ask for additional sports offerings on a regular basis. And it was absolutely wonderful that we're in a position to be able to say yes. So thank you so much for the work that you're doing to make this happen because it's no small task, but it's very, very meaningful for our students and our families.
Welcome.
Any other questions or comments? We're going to go to the next, I don't know, Mr. Archibald, this is not what we're going to be running on at this time, right?
Correct.
We're just still gathering more information. We'll come back in the future.
That's correct.
Okay. All righty. So hang on. The next, I don't know, challenge is, three, correct on committee, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you, President Burton. Tonight, we have one item on the agenda, and the presenter will be Mr. Archibald, and he'll be speaking about the Girls Education Programs. Mr. Archibald?
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford. This is an annual event. As you know, the state mandated pupil accounting guidelines require that courses counted for credit and state reimbursement be included on an approved list adopted by the school district's Board of Education. So tonight, I bring you the 2017-18 Adult and Continuing Education Programs of Study for your consideration. And in the past years, this has been a consent item when it comes to the voting meeting. The Livonia Public Schools, as you know, and the Continuing Education Program, they have a longstanding history of offering relevant courses for our students in the community. Student service through these programs include those looking for credit recovery, adult high school completion, adult ESL, adult basic education, and high school equivalency preparation. The course offerings are adjusted regularly to keep current with any changes to the LPS curriculum and/or our state or federal requirements. You should have received a copy of the Programs of Study in advance of tonight's meeting. There is one change from last year pertaining to high school equivalency prep. There are two assessments in addition to the GED that we're all familiar with that an individual may take to demonstrate high school equivalency. One of those is the TASK, which is the test for assessing secondary completion, and the other is HISCET, which is the High School Equivalency Test. So again, in that preparation course, our students that are in that will be working on preparation to take any one of those three equivalency exams. Overall, our enrollment this semester is on pace to what it has been in previous years. The number increases, as you know, we have some lowering enrollment, in particular on our ESL program. Enrollment in credit recovery classes is on a tuition basis. Funding for all other programs is through both state or federal grants. And so, again, I'm just requesting that the 2017-18 Adult Ed Programs of Study beyond our voting agenda, but certainly would ask or answer, I should say, any questions you might have.
Does anybody have any questions? President Burton?
At least a few of these. I know it says Livonia Public Schools residency is not required.
Correct.
Can you speak to that for us and clarify that for the public?
Although I'm just clearly stating that the courses are open to both LPS residents and non-residents, it's important to have that out there as programs around us have either diminished or dissolved. So we try to get that out in our communication so that folks don't think that you have to be a resident of the district like our typical day program.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Archibald, I see this is an extensive list of courses. Do we usually, how many students on average end up in these courses? Or do we don't offer all these courses all the time, or how does that work?
It varies. It's typically based on student needs. So they may be taking, you know, you may have 10 students in a class taking multiple classes within that one. So they really do base the course, I mean, they're all offered, but they really try to meet the students' needs as this particular population is coming in and you want to take advantage of striking while the iron's hot. So we don't just say to them, well, I'm sorry, that's offered in the winter term. It's not offered now. We work to accommodate the student schedules. And much of it is online as well, so we're able to facilitate that way.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This will be on the consent agenda?
Am I okay with consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All righty. The next item on the agenda this evening is item for the Fire Arts Committee, and I will turn the meeting over to Mrs. Bonifield.
Thank you, President Burton. Tonight, we will be going over the 16-17 financial statement presentation with Mrs. Smith.
Lisa Vargo and Tom Marchese from Plant Moran. They will be walking through the financial statements that are coming to you right now. We had the opportunity during our study session to go over some of the highlights of our budget to actual for 2016-17. Now with Lisa and Tom, we'll have an opportunity to go into a little more detail.
Thank you. Well, first off, thank you for having us here today. We're very pleased to report the audits to the committee here. So first off, my name is Lisa Vargo. I'm a partner at Plant Moran in our K-12 practice, and this is my first year on Lebonia, so I just want to thank everybody for all the kindness and the courtesy extended to us from throughout the audit. With me is Tom Marchese. He's a manager in our K-12 practice as well, and has been working on Lebonia for many years now. So I first want to start out, as I said, the time and the courtesy that Allison and her staff spent with us in order to get this audit ready for us and prepared is, it's a lot of work, so we definitely appreciate all your help. We're going to cover a few things with everybody today. We're going to cover the financial statement and single audit, which Tom's going to go through. Then we're going to take a few minutes and pull through the graphs. These graphs are what is going to be presented to the board next week in the board meeting. So I wanted to give everybody here a chance to, we can kind of pull through it, and if there's any questions, or you want to kind of see something a little different, presented differently, we can certainly do that. And then finally, I'm going to cover the required audit communication and the end of audit letters. So before I turn it over to Tom, I just want to take a moment and talk about the financial statements as a whole. So the financial statements, pulling the information together is a service that Plant Moran does, but the financial statements itself is the management of Lebonia. Lebonia Public Schools gave us all the information, we just pulled it all together. The only thing in these financial reports that would be, you can say, Plant Moran's, would be what you hire us to do, and that is to place an opinion on your financial statements and your single audits. So I'm happy to report that the opinions are both unmodified, which is the highest level of assurance that we can give you as auditors, that your statements are free of material misstatement. As we go through, we assess risk, we assess controls, and we look at materiality. And so those are really the three major things that we go in through as we go and we plan our audit approach. With that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Tom, and he's going to spend a little bit more time on the details in the financial statements.
Hi, everyone. It's good to be back.
Nice to see you.
I'm Marchese. And I'll start off with the basic financial report. It's the bulk year of the reports that we've got to offer you today. And we'll start on page one, which represents the opinion letter. So as Lisa said, we provided the district an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the highest level we can provide as an independent auditor. This letter stretches from page one to three. So moving on to page four, we have Management's Discussion and Analysis. That stretches from page four to 12. So Management's Discussion Analysis represents Management's Commentary on 16-17 School Year Activity and Results. Without going into too much detail on that, we'll push along to page 13. The statement is the Statement of Net Position on a Government-Wide Basis. So this is a balance sheet presented on a full accrual basis, and there's a few differences from the fund-level statements. Three specifically with significant impact on your statements. You have capital assets of $227 million, within total assets of $388 million. Within the liabilities, you have long-term liabilities and net pension liability. The long-term liabilities are bonded obligations of $232 million, and your net pension liability is $279 million. Total liabilities and deferred inflows of resources are $560 million at year-end, and the net position at June 30, 2017 is $171.9 million. And you see that it's at a negative value. So this is caused by the recording of the net pension liability, as it has been in prior years. So it's not a cause for alarm as a negative fund balance would be. You're going to see a lot of districts throughout the state of Michigan with this negative net position based on the impact of GASP-68 and the net pension liability. So page 14 is the Statement of Activities. Again, it's on a government-wide basis, presenting all the revenues and expenses on a full accrual basis. Without spending too much time on this, I will direct your attention to the fund-level statements, typically because the users will find the fund-level statements more informative for decision-making. Page 15, we begin with the governmental funds. This is the balance sheet on a fund level, and we, you can see that this year, we have four broken-out funds. The General Fund, which is your major fund, Special Education Center Program, Building and Repairers Fund, and the Bond Series II Fund. And then we have the non-major governmental funds lumped together. Those include food service and debt service. So starting with the far-right total column, you can see that the district has $137 million in total assets on a fund level. We also have $40.6 million in total liabilities for the district, and $96 million in fund balance towards the bottom of the schedule. So within the total assets, well, $137 million, I'll draw your attention to $60.5 million underneath the Series II Bond Fund. These represent unspent bond proceeds, and these are restricted funds at the fund level. And then we have, within the General Fund, $24 million of cash and investments, and $23 million of receivables due from other governmental units. This will include your July and August state aid receivables. Moving down to the fund balance, we have General Fund Balance is $16.5 million. That's an increase of $8 million this year, which is a very healthy increase. You can see that most of it's unassigned. Moving to the Building and Repairers Funds and the Series II Fund Columns, you can see that respectively, there's $16.7 million and $56.8 million of restricted fund balance for the capital projects. This is because they're related to the sinking fund and the bond, unspent bond funds again. Pages 16 and 18 provide reconciliations at a fund level to the full accrual basis. You can see that a lot of the information on here relates to either capital assets, bonded obligations, or the net pension liability. Page 17 breaks out the revenue and expenditures at a fund level. So on a district-wide basis, we have $203 million of revenue compared to $237 million of total expenditures, resulting in a $33.7 million decrease in fund balance. The decrease is driven mostly by the bond expenditures. So we have $30 million of bond expenditures in the current year in the Series II Fund, and then another $15 million lumped within this non-major governmental funds. So just the bond funds alone represent $45 million of decreased fund balance. Within the General Fund, though, you do see an $8.4 million increase in fund balance. This is driven by cost constraints and at expenditure level, and a enhancement millage revenue of $5 million in the current year. So this inter-district revenue within the General Fund, the first column on the left, there's $5.9 million this year, and for the next five years, I believe, you have the enhancement millage.
Just call back for a second?
Yes.
Special education, does that go, is that included in the Act 18 program, or is Act 18 separate in?
That is our Act 18 program. Yep, the only thing in there is the Act 18 program, revenues and expenditures.
So local center programs are just in the General Fund?
Yep, that's correct.
No problem.
Tom, I think we've. Could you clarify the inter-district sources under the General Fund?
Sure.
Are there other, are there other sources of that beyond the Wayne County Enhancement Millage?
There are, I.
Just to clarify, exactly, we've shared with the community, we, I believe we collected approximately $4.8 million. So I just want to be sure.
That's right.
As we report out the $5.9, just to clarify that those include additional revenue sources?
Yes, beyond the Enhancement Millage, that's correct. And yep, $4.8 million is the exact number for the Enhancement Millage.
So what would the remainder, where would the remainder come from?
So I do not have the detail on it. Allison, are you?
You know, I don't, but I can have that for us for our regular reading.
That'd be fine, thank you.
Like speaking out, I'll give the exact dollar amount for you, but that could be like indirect cost transfers, so moving the funds from the special ed fund, we're allowed to claim indirect cost, and then that comes into the General Fund, and that would fall under the inter-district sources, I believe.
Okay.
So, but I'll give you that.
Yeah, we have the detail.
Okay, thank you.
Page 18 is another reconciliation between full accrual and fund-level accounting. Again, you'll see a lot of capital asset-related activity along with debt service activity and net pension adjustments. Next, we have the Internal Service Fund. And you can see that $2.3 million in net position at the bottom is earmarked for fringe benefits of employees. This represents such things as health insurance is the biggest driver. Page 20, we have the revenue and expenditures of the Internal Service Fund. $21.3 million of operating expenses in this Internal Service Fund in the 16-17 school year. Again, this relates primarily to the health insurance cost of the district. We'll move a bit further down the road into the footnotes, Note 1. So Note 1 represents all the significant accounting policies at the district. Page 26 includes a description of the various funds at the district. Note 1 stretches through page 1. I won't go into all the details of this footnote. I moved to page 32 now. And just to hand out Note 2, we indicate within the report that there were no significant expenditure budget variances, which is always a great sign at the district. Page 33, at the bottom of page, we show a little chart of the value of the investments held by the district. $77 million of district assets are held within these investments.
Tom?
Yes?
Is that general fund dollars, or is that bond dollars?
So these are bond dollars primarily in, yes, bond dollars.
Okay.
The restricted assets.
Restricted, okay, thank you.
Note 6, we have the capital asset detail. The district this year had $42 million of additions as it spent down its bond proceeds, and that resulted in net capital assets at year-end of $227 million. Moving on with Note 6 on page 37, we do have a note about asset impairment. So this asset impairment relates to the closure of two buildings, and that resulted in net book loss from the asset value of the buildings and all the equipment within them being written down to zero in the current year. And that was $1.2 million.
And that's, is that a normal accounting practice that would happen whenever a building is closed, or was there anything abnormal that?
No, that's purely usual.
Okay, thank you.
Anytime that there's a change of use of an asset, we have to consider the impairment of it, and so it's a non-cash expense.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that it went through properly.
Yes, absolutely.
Page 38, we have Note 9, Long-Term Debt. This will show up in your full accrual statements. $236 million of total long-term debt. The primary portion of that is $209 million related to the government obligation bonds. And Note 13, on page 41, we have this vast disclosure, I believe it stretches five pages, regarding the Michigan Public Schools Employee Retirement System, or known as MIPSers. So this goes into a lot of detail, a lot of accounting language, but the number that I would just draw to your attention is the total net pension obligation that's recorded on the books of the district. You can find that on page 43. At the top of page 43, $278.5 billion is the school district's allocated share of the net pension obligation. This represents 1.1% of the unfunded pension obligation for the state. So again, it's not new, but just to show you the numbers we're dealing with, it's a very unfunded program, I think, to the $225 billion. And that is actuarially developed, too, so that's not a number that's specific, that a check is going to have to be issued from the district. It's an amount that, in the foreseeable future, this is what it's going to cost all the participants in this retirement system. Page 47, discuss Note 15, Upcoming Accounting Pronouncements. So the net pension obligation, that represents just the pension side of the retirement system. Note 15 represents an upcoming accounting pronouncement for the health benefits of the retirement system that are due to be accrued to every district participates in MIPSers throughout Michigan. Early estimates put the pension liability at about $8 billion, 8 to 10 billion. So you're looking at another considerable amount on your full accrual statements. And this will come through effective next year when we're presenting.
Do you have a question coming up?
And again, this is going to be similar to the other pension statement.
Correct.
Where it's not additional money that's going to be charged to the district, but it's reflected on the district's long-term obligation.
That's right, Ms. Burton. Page 50 begins the section entitled Reported Supplemental Information. This schedule on page 50 is just the budget-to-actual report for the General Fund. At the top right, or at the top-right column, we have the over-budget revenue. During the year, the district had $1.5 million of excess revenues. A little bit lower on the page, we have total expenditures, and the district, again, came in favorably by $1.1 million, which represents a 0.8% favorable variance. And at year-end, this represents $2.7 million of favorable activity above budget results. So though the district projected a $5.6 million fund balance increase in the General Fund, actual results were 8.4. The remainder of the report represents some required information on the pension. I don't think anything too earth-shattering, so I won't go into detail. Page 58, in onward, it has the detail of the non-major funds. If you would like to look at that in more detail from the front schedules. But barring no questions on that, I'll move on to the Federal Awards Report. Well, on the Federal Awards Report, we have just three letters. It's, there's not very much detail. We have a little boilerplate language, similar to. It's, there's not very much detail, we have a little boilerplate language similar to prior years. It would be more exciting if there are any, not for us, but I guess for members of the community, if there are any reportable findings, we're happy to report there are none. So we have standard language throughout this report. There's three letters within the report and they include our considerations of internal control over financial reporting and unmodified opinions on the CFA, the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards and the major federal program which we tested, being IDEA or the Special Education Cluster. Within the CFA, just to get, highlight a few areas. There's $8.5 million of federal expenditures in the current year. Child nutrition represents $2 million of that federal award amount. IDEA represents 4 million and Title I represents 1.3 million. And beyond that, like I said, there were no reportable findings. We issued an unmodified opinion on the basic financial statements and there's no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses to report within the basic financial statements or the major federal program that we tested.
And I guess I would just like to add one other thing. Our bar for single audit testing is very low. So unlike reportable conditions or accounting items that we may see when we are assessing, when we're doing compliance testing, we basically have to report any type of deviation from the guide that we are given. So I think it's very commendable to like not have any findings in these programs as we were going through them. So, thank you. All right, so that was a lot of information. I know, a lot of pages, a lot of information. So what we could do right now is flip through the board presentation. I'm not going to go through the numbers and the details because I think Tom has already done a great job identifying all the variances. But what I thought we could do is just let's pull through these. It might give a little bit more color about what really has transpired this last year. And if anybody has any specific questions about the graphs or if they want to maybe remove one or change some, we absolutely can do that before the board meeting on Monday. Okay? All right, so the first graph is the governmental funds balance sheet. The focus again is on the major funds. As Tom pointed out, we have the general fund, the special education, building repairs fund and the 2013 bond series two fund. So we were just going to present this, it's a condensed balance sheet. The next graph is the general fund statement, revenue expenditures and the changes in the fund balance, the budget to the actual. And I think what is important to point out in this slide is to focus in on the net number. So the net number of the over or under budget is that 2.7 million that Tom was talking about. And that's the net number. Essentially, the net favorable budget is due to additional property taxes. There was another $400,000 of state revenue. The salary budgets kind of came in right, like I think at about just about $54,000 of where everybody, where the budget was. Purchased services was, I think approximately $268,000 less than anticipated. And the supplies and equipment were about $426,000 less than anticipated. So you look at that collectively and that really focuses on what our net number makes up at 2.7 million. The next graph is some GASB 68 commentary. And again, as Tom indicated, this isn't new, we've had it for a few years, but it is pretty important, the numbers are pretty steep. And I think, you know, when you look at it, because it's out of the control of the school district, I think it's a continually important graph to remind people what GASB 68 is. So this goes into a little bit detail there. As we know, it's 36% of the covered payroll. You take the 36% of the covered payroll, 10% is that flow-through money, but then 26% is the direct cost of the district. So I think that point is important here. In addition, the reminder of GASB 75 coming up next year. So again, it doesn't affect your fund statement, it doesn't, you know, it's an accounting pronouncement that's going to pull in with your full accrual statement and probably add another six pages of footnotes in the back, so. This next slide just compares your government-wide to the fund level. And again, the government-wide, we also refer to it as your GASB 34, your full accrual statements. That's bringing in your fixed assets, it's bringing in your debt, it's bringing in your pension. And so I think it's pretty informative when you take that information and you set it right next to the fund level information. The next graph represents your general fund revenue. But what we wanted to point out that this data excludes funded projects and the athletics funds activity. We're really focusing primarily on the general fund type activity. So overall, I think this pie chart says the story. Majority of it really comes from your state, your foundation revenue kind of coming in. You have your local sources, federal, the enhancement millage, the 4.6 million right there, and then other of $3.3 million.
Just on the, on the local part of the pie, I'm assuming that's the property taxes?
Uh, yes.
And so that is, local is a little bit misleading because I think, I know it has to be like that, but I mean, just for people who are looking at this, we don't have control over this local portion. The local portion is what's assumed that we're going to get on a local level. That's not a flow-through through the state. So where the blue and the red together are regulated all completely by the state, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And we could put a little bit more description in that local. Absolutely.
A little bit about...
Explain what's in there, yeah.
For, sometimes when you're not used to public school funding, public school funding, when you say local, it makes it sound a little bit more like we have some type of control over that, which we really don't. So I think that would be really helpful to...
Yeah, we absolutely can change the wording.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Similarly, where it says enhancement millage, can we add Wayne County enhancement millage? Again, the folks at this table know what enhancement millage is, but for folks in the community who may be reading this, I'd like them to know this is where their tax dollars are going and they are very meaningful.
That's good.
Okay, and the next graph represents the general fund expenditures. And again, the pie tells a good story. The majority of the pie goes to the salaries and instructional costs, which also ties into your employee benefits. So really, that's the majority of your cost. The next graph, we're comparing the fund revenues and expenditures over a period of time. This graph, I think, really tells a story when you go back all the way to 2012, when the per pupil count decreased so significantly. And so what we wanted to show here is that over the course of time, you had that big drop in 2012 and yet we still haven't caught up to be equal to pre that time. So that was the purpose for this graph. I mean, it is improving and it's on the upswing there, but as we also talked about, there's also other types of obligations that the school district is required to continue to fund.
And this is not adjusted for time, correct? These are full dollars. So when we're looking at this graph, seeing that we took this big hit and we're not quite up to that level, we're not including the fact that things are more expensive now than they were.
Like rate inflation.
Thank you.
Yep. The next graph, because as we know, one of the key factors for the state revenue is the pupil count. And so the next graph shows the history since 2009 of pupil count, where in, I think in 2009, it was close to 17,000 and then in 2017, it's approximately 14,500. So, you know, we just wanted to show that because it is such an important part of that foundation calculation. The next graph is the fund balance as a percent of expenditures. So again, I think history tells a lot. But what we wanted to point out, as we've talked about throughout this session, is that the district has been able to increase their fund balance, which is fantastic. So it's gone from 5.86% of the expenditures up to 11.72%, which is great. The state average is 11.1%. And so that is fantastic news. One thing just to kind of keep in mind, the guide of what would be a really good percent would be about 15 to 20% of your expenditures would be a really healthy fund balance. So this last year, fantastic, you did a great job adding and budgeting. But just kind of keep in mind with the continual decrease in student counts and where the goal is, which would be about 15 to 20%, just continue to keep an eye on your fund balance.
So in this slide, or when we talk about this slide, why, I could put a visual on what our, you know, kind of our target is, that 15 to 20%. And also some explanations about why that's important, what that means for us aside from early warning district. I think financially, one of the first points that we've talked about is the fact that we have to borrow for the summer. And that may not sound like a big deal, but when financially, when you add the interest up and the regulations that the state has, and I know at one time, I'm not sure if the regulations have changed, but once we borrowed that money over the summer, we had to keep it for a full year, even if we could pay it back in August or September when our state funding came back in. And so that was a big expense that now we're able to keep that money in the general fund. So if we can talk about some of those benefits. And I think the other thing, and you can tell me if I'm off-base on this, but I think when the general public sees that we're, you know, building money up, you know, and there's still, there's still some issues in the district where we know that we can do better, but the funding isn't necessarily all there. Part of that one is why it's important that our fund balance is improved and why we need to do that. But the second thing is, I don't know where we can hit this, but just because we have a fund balance doesn't mean that all of our problems are solved or all of our financial issues are resolved. We know that there's a lot of things that we need to do for the district, like a million dollars in checks or whatever that number is now, to get some... So I think there's a big difference between being financially styled and flushed. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
No, that's right.
My soapbox.
No, and that's why we tried to add the graph on the declining enrollment too, because that provides some uncertainty since that drives so much at a school district.
Yeah.
So we'll definitely consider those additions to...
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you. Is it good?
And then the final graph, and again, this kind of comes to the whole fund balance discussion as well, so you have the pension obligation. So a historical trend, because we really feel the historical trends tell a lot of the story. You look at 2017, it is section between the section 147 or the flow-through payment that you get and it just goes right back out. And then you have the earned subsidized retirement cost, which that is the direct cost of the district. So again, that number keeps going up. So that is going to be the graph. We will, I think, oh, I'm sorry.
No, just wanted to point out, and as the board, we've pointed this out publicly before, but it's important to note, I think each time it comes around, that this additional money that has come into the district that brings it to 34.9 million on page 11, those additional dollars literally come to the district and we have to turn around and write that exact check to the penny back out to the state for the retirement system, which is why some folks can say education is getting more money and other folks can say education is getting less money, and they're both true statements. It depends on if you're including that or not. In the past, that additional money was not given to the districts and then the district had to turn around and give it right back. And therefore, it wasn't included in education dollars, it was considered retirement dollars. But when this additional money is given to the school district and we have to give it right back, it is the same dollars, but now they're considering it to be education dollars. What's important to note is those are dollars that are not ever going to go into our classrooms, not for five minutes. And that's just important for folks to understand that this is where the statement of X number of million dollars more are being spent on education now than there was five or 10 years ago. I believe that is not true if you're talking about dollars that are going to come into our district that we can spend to educate our children. It's perfectly fine if you're wanting to say those are additional dollars that are being spent on the education retirement system. That is completely true and I have no problem with that. But it's important to know that when statements are being thrown around very casually, that X number of million dollars more are being spent on education than ever were spent in the past, that is not classroom dollars, those are retirement dollars. They are very valid, they're very important. But please understand that they are retirement dollars, they're not to be spent on educating our children.
And to your point too, Ms. Burden, these dollars, that funding is not certain going forward either, so that's yet another reason to keep establishing your fund balance. So great observations on all accounts.
Do you guys have any more? Can I, can we start throwing questions at you or do you have somewhere to present?
Information, the letter, do we have the letter? Oh, that's okay, that's okay, we will get that letter emailed out too. So we have what we refer to as our end of audit letter. And what that letter is going to have is it's going to have our required audit communication that we as the auditors need to report back to say, did everything go as planned? And then this is also the opportunity for us to report whether there's any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So that's the required. And then the other additional information that's going to be in the letter is a lot of legislative updates. That's the majority of what's in the letter. And I think we pretty much addressed any of the upcoming concerns. There's some additional information legislation here that everybody can partake. So just again, with the required audit communication, so I'm pleased to report that we did not have to deviate from our plan. So had we had to deviate from our audit plan, we would have had to report that to the board. We as auditors did not find any journal entries that we had opposed. So again, that would be something we'd be required to report. The most sensitive estimate in the financial statement continues to surround your pension. So we need to continue to remind the board about that. And again, we do not go through and test internal controls when we come out to your district, but we assess them. And we do spend a lot of time really understanding what's going on, the processes, your controls. If anything comes to our attention as we're going through our normal audit procedures, we are required to report it. The auditing standards, thanks to Enron, which was many, many years ago, have continued. The bar is very low. So if we come across anything, the auditing standard said would a prudent, those charged with governance, that would be in this room, need to know that there is a lack of control here or whatever. And so that's a very low bar. And I'm happy to report that we did not see anything as far as assessing the controls that we felt rise to that level. So I commend Allison and her team, so everything looked really good as we were turning the rocks and looking at everything. So the remaining of this letter, and then we can get to questions. Informational in nature.
Can I ask?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just to clarify, you're saying, I think I know what you're saying when you say the bar is low, but I think in general, the statement the bar is low is a negative statement. I think you're trying to say that the threshold for your radar to go up is very low and the bar is very high for what we crossed as far as having no concerns from Plant Moran. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yes, so...
Mine's coach for having the bar is high, but low, confusing people, but...
Yes, yes, so in order for, let's put it this way, it doesn't take much to trigger a reportable condition.
Right, so it's a very low threshold.
It's a low threshold.
And a high bar to pass.
High bar to pass.
Okay, thank you.
That's a better way to say it.
Thanks.
Let's start with the questions. Come on.
We jumped in with a lot of them.
All right, we jumped in with a lot of questions. What I would like to see maybe talked about, and I know I have on this one too, is just talk about some of the things that are done in the audit. I think because the financial statements when they come out are a very high level. level, there's not a lot of detail to them. It's the culmination of thousands and thousands of transactions all put into a few pages, based on, you know, the amount of transactions that we have. But, and you touched on it a little bit, but just the different things that you touch when you go through, and maybe touch on some of those things. And Allison, I know that you probably have some typical questions that you get asked during the year that maybe we touch on some of those things. I think one of the things that's been an issue right now is our website transparency and what standards are we meeting? Some of the things, you know, how are we interacting with the state? Are we properly recording things to the state? Do our, does our chart of accounts line up with the state's chart of accounts? How are those transactions being done? And maybe touch a little bit more on the internal controls. And I think that it's important to be really clear whether or not we set the bar, but to be very clear. But we are, and you guys already said it, it doesn't take much of a threshold to make a reportable condition. It's not like we need to find something really awful in order to report. And I think the public doesn't always see that because it always seems to be a really high level. But, you know, you guys are going through, and you're pulling checks, and you're pulling invoices, and talk about, you know, the governmental fund and how much detail you go into, how much time, I mean, you guys come out here and work for two weeks in the summer, and that's on site. That doesn't include all the prep work and all the post-audit work that has to be done, and the number of hours and the number of people that go into coming up. Sometimes it's really hard to get your clients to pay because you hand them one sheet of paper, and they're like, whoa, you know. But it's very extensive. And how much, when you compliment Allison on her work with her group, and how meaningful that is, because when you go in and do an audit, you're not, you don't always face those situations. And just how forthcoming the information. And if you could just touch on some of that stuff, maybe even on a real personal level, just to maybe build, build some confidence out there that these things are really looked at. We're not just out there and.
Calling numbers together.
You know, we're talking about people that are all worked out when there's more than three or four zeros on a page. You know, and you start getting into millions and then sometimes throwing out billions. It becomes overwhelming.
Sure. No, I'm happy.
And so if we can just talk about, you know, some of the, bring it down to a little bit of a lower level so that it doesn't seem like it's this huge thing up here, that it really on a day-to-day basis, you know, there's a lot that goes into it, a lot of consistency, a lot of policy, a lot of effort, and a lot of thought goes into everything that's done. So again, my soapbox. Having done, in my past, I, you know, and especially now with. You know, it's, it's a tough thing. It's very time-consuming, and especially with government budgets, there's a whole nother level of stuff that goes into that. So. Okay. You guys think of anything else to talk?
We've covered them.
So if you guys have any questions, can you please make sure to pass those on to Mrs. Oakley or, because I know there are a lot of documents here. There's a couple of documents that Allison's going to give to us that weren't in the package we're going to have tonight. So please make sure if you have any questions or you come up with a number that, you know, you have questions about or you think there's something that needs a further explanation, please make sure that you get it to Mrs. Oakley and Mrs. Smith so that we can be prepared with the answers, and we won't have to go, hopefully echo that, and I know that you guys are always very willing to come to answers. But it'd be nice if we can present those all at the formal voting meeting and have all those taken care of when we have probably our highest. And we'll move forward from there. Okay? Anybody? We're all good? Okay. All right, then. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We look forward to seeing you. And our episode finance.
Thank you very much.
Five, building excitement. We'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Johnson.
Road salt purchase. We spoke about it two weeks ago. I'm going to keep bringing it back to the board. I'm going to do, it has eight plus degrees outside, so we'll just keep bringing it back. It's time for the salt purchase. We spoke about this briefly previously, and I wanted to give you a little more details. From my memory, I can see that we're planning on purchasing fifteen hundred tons of road salt for the seventeen eighteen school year. As a comparison, from the past few years, we purchased, or planned on purchasing fifteen hundred tons last year, twelve hundred tons the year prior, and two thousand back in fourteen fifteen. Correctly contracted seventy percent, there's a thirty percent variance that we get, so we have to purchase seventy percent of whatever we request to, or contract to buy. If we need more, we can also go thirty percent above. So that's going to give us anywhere between, well, we have to very close to two thousand tons of salt for the season, which based upon our actual usage, ranging from eleven hundred to the high number of eighteen hundred back in that wicked fourteen fifteen season, we should be well set. This is going to be coming from the Morton Salt Company via the My Deal Extended Purchasing Program through the Michigan Department of Treasury Management and Budget. Oh, yes, thank you for, this voice just sounded off from the heavens. It is, it is. And it's actually a reduction of eleven dollars and forty cents per ton from last year. This season's cost is thirty dollars and ninety-seven cents per ton. So we're looking at a total of forty-six thousand, four fifty-five, an anticipated total based upon the fifteen hundred. And again, it's a nice reduction of eleven forty per ton.
Mr. Francis, if we happen to buy a little too much salt, or we have a really mild winter, we can carry that salt over into the next year, and it's in, I believe, in a.
It's in a shed. We can store some of it, yes.
And so it'll last until the next season that we need it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is this salt delivered all at once, or is it brought in over the winter? How does that work?
It's not at once because we can take it in the chunks, knowing that we have to, we do have to purchase, like I said, seventy percent of the fifteen hundred, but we can continue to order more through the winter. So it's brought in for what we can handle with our, with our storage. And that's to our advantage, obviously, the way the contract works, to order less or order more based upon our target of the fifteen hundred tons.
Mr. Francis, the, the cost per ton, I'm assuming that's a negotiated price?
It's a, it's a bid price. Anything from the My Deal or any of those consortium contracts, we're bid. And so the My Deal, which is run through the state of Michigan, the Department of Technology, Management and Budget, they put out the bid for the agencies throughout the state to be able to use, so we don't have to go out and bid it ourselves. So it has been bid.
Okay, I'm also assuming the seventy percent requirement is also per the consortium contract?
It is. It's something that, going back to previous board votes and memos, continues to be in, looking regardless of who won this year. It's Morton Salt Company, but that seventy percent with the thirty percent overage seems to be consistent.
And if we need more salt, if we need more salt, other people are going to need more salt as well.
Yeah. I mean, if there's a, there's a run on salt, then that's, we're all in the same boat. So it's nice that we can actually store some of our own. So if we have it, we can use it, because once we already purchased and have it delivered, we've got it.
We've got it. Okay, great. Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. And that.
Yeah, could we, next week to vote?
Oh, yes, we need to put it on regular.
Regular, please.
Okay, that'll take us to secondary furniture purchase, two thousand thirteen bond.
The secondary furniture purchase is going to be specifically for the request to be the lounge furniture for Garfield Community School, the Western Wayne Skill Center program. Just to back up from our conversation from the study session, which was actually two weeks ago now that I think about it, I talked about in general secondary furniture purchases. We will be purchasing more furniture for secondary, specifically the new item would be the two-person desks that we've talked about, chairs as well, that we'll be getting some more chairs. But we are still making sure that the table that we choose, I shouldn't call it table, the desk that we choose is the right desk for our secondary schools. So we pumped the brakes a little bit and went back to the sizing of it to make sure that we have something that is appropriate and that we don't buy a whole lot of, and then find out that maybe wasn't the exact model that we were looking for. So we'll have that wrapped up. Mr. Archibald and I are aiming for our next round of meetings. So you'll see secondary furniture again, but we still do have the Garfield purchase. We're looking to purchase from the interior environments at Novi, Michigan, at a total cost of the thirty-one thousand, thirty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. The LMC, the former LMC of Garfield Elementary, is being converted, part of it, into a student lounge for our eighteen to twenty-six-year-old students in the Skill Center program. So we have purchased some unique pieces for a more adult feel to the lounge. The products that we're going to be getting through interior environments, that's the vendor they actually work with through the Cooperative Purchasing Network, which again, is a contract that is already been bid out, and four different companies, Sit On It, Kruger International, All Steel, and First Office. They're pieces from each of those four companies that we're able to get through interior environments. So in total, and in your packet, you can see the line items, in total, the thirty-one thousand and some change is the amount that we're requesting the board consider to approve for the lounge at Garfield Community School. And that, just to confirm with Dr. Terrell, that's going to be exclusive for the eighteen to twenty-six-year-olds. Even though GSRP is located in that building, they have their own wing. This is, this is specific to the young adults. Any questions?
So unless they're installing it, so, which is great, are they doing that in coordination with our construction timeline?
Yes, yes. So they're, an install is, makes it sound like we're drilling something into the floor. We're not. Install is the freight and then the carry and placement, et cetera. But we're going to have coordination, so we're hoping that this timeline gives us plenty of advance notice for when we, when we have that. Now, really, even a better case scenario would be if it came in a bit early, we could store it for a short time and have our LPS crews bring it on over when it's ready as well. So either way, we're in good shape. If it times up perfectly for them, or if we accept it at the warehouse, then we can take it over as well. This is a combination of forty-two inch and thirty-inch tables, stools, chairs, larger tables, ottoman-type, I guess no other word than an ottoman, ottoman's an ottoman, what we call S-chairs, which are like similar to what's in front of the PACs, the straight cushy ones, but these have a curved them, items like that that we can move if they come in early, which is frankly, can be preferable that we actually have it.
Any other questions? President Burton?
And again, the funding for this came, it's coming from the general fund, but it's Act eighteen money that's going through the general fund, and it's being used for these students.
That is correct. So we had put through in the budget for Garfield Community School, the five hundred thousand dollars. That's directly from capital projects in the general fund, but it got there through the indirect cost of the Act eighteen program, which is indirect cost from any of our programs. Title one is similar, title two can be similar, where indirect cost can be labeled a percentage of the total amount of the funding that is appropriately used and moved into the general fund because we have staff that work on these as far as in the business office. We have time spent, hours spent, and money spent working on Act eighteen and other programs that are funded as such, that it's an allowable expenditure, it's not even expenditure, allowable transfer into the general fund. So Ms. Smith has put that amount into the general fund, capital projects.
So bottom line, the funding for this, the bottom line dollars are Act eighteen dollars?
Emanated from, yes. The original emanation was the Act eighteen, correct?
And for the benefit of the public, that is money that is from the state of Michigan that is specifically for the eighteen, eighteen to twenty-six-year-old population of our special.
It's from the county, right?
I'm sorry, from the county, not from the state. But it is specifically for this age group and for their, their education needs.
Act eighteen actually can range across all ages of our program. For this particular use, it is for our students in the Western Wayne Skill Center, age eighteen to twenty-six. But Act eighteen would actually cover, starting with our preschool students, all the way through our post-secondary. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I want to make just a clarification, because anybody who's picked up the agenda, it says that this is two thousand thirteen bond money. So we need to just make sure that everybody understands.
Well, we did make the budget transfer from the Act eighteen fund to the two thousand thirteen bond fund for the line items specific to Garfield Community School, the Western Wayne Skill Center program.
Okay.
So that it actually is accurate, but the original source of the funding for a portion of the costs related to the renovation for Garfield Community School is coming from Act eighteen.
Okay, so it's actually a combination.
Right. Are you, and you're comfortable with the way that was described, just because on the agenda, it says two thousand thirteen bond because it was the Garfield project?
So right now, it's set into its own specific fund, it's in the capital project fund, so it's a separate, and you won't see that with our budget. So you won't see it on the same budget as the bond fund. You will see it in a separate fund, so it's specifically for the bond work in the state. So they are tied together, but we are accounting for them separately.
Two separate funds.
Everybody's reading this, and then hearing the discussion may get confused.
It, yeah, I see what you're saying, because it is confusing. It's like Ms. Smith's saying, it's for the bond work at Garfield, but we have a line item out of it, and she's been working with the owner's rep, and I'm sure her entire department to make sure that we have those two lines appropriately accounted for.
Just a comment. President Burton and I were over at Johnson last week, and just to show how important it was for the Furniture Committee to do all that work in determining what furniture was best, in talking with multiple teachers over there, they are thrilled with the furniture. The stackability of it, the height of desks, the low desks, the ability to be flexible, the hokie stools, they are just outstanding. And just for, to commend the work that was done by that committee and the continuing work, it's paying off.
Yeah, that's, that's nice to hear, because it is a lot of work. I know that we talk quite a bit about furniture, and it's not, it's certainly not just me. There's everybody else, and I know Ms. Scott, Ms. Smith, Dr. Terrell, Mr. Archibald, we've gone through furniture today alone. I lost track of how many times we talked about furniture. So it is a lot of work, but totally worth it when you walk through a school and you go into a classroom, and the students are engaged, and they're in, they're in different groups, and they're using the flexible furniture. Or when we talk about this proposed purchase for the Garfield Lounge, I saw Pat Meese, the principal over at Skill Center Day, we were talking about it. He was excited. When it comes to fruition, it's all worth it.
All right, thanks. Then we'll put this on regular. Then we'll go to C, interior door replacement, two thousand thirteen bond.
Okay, this is actually just. This is actually just going to be a quick update for you. When last we were together at the study session, I had brought up interior door replacement stating that we needed some interior doors from the 2013 bond for Frost. We went back this summer, as you know, did some touch-up work, some things that we were conservative with during the Phase One. These are the doors. The original conversation we had was again to purchase about six interior doors for Frost. And at that study session, I said, oh, and we might also be getting one at Roosevelt. And also, we might be getting one at Cooper. Hold on, that may throw us into a situation where it requires board approval, et cetera, et cetera, if this is sounding familiar. It did, so I wanted to just update you. We've got this out for bid now. We'll be bringing it back in the next round once we have the bid closed and we do the bid tabulation, et cetera, et cetera. Because our estimates have it as, from the quotes we were getting, cracking the $23,000 barrier.
Any questions?
So just an update, nothing to go on for next time. We'll bring it back for a future committee meeting when we have the documents.
Thanks, appreciate it. And that'll take us to D, replacement of Webster LMC air conditioning, 2013.
So Webster, the air conditioning unit on the roof that is feeding the media center, the lab that's adjoining, and the offices around it went out over the summer. This is of course something that we were planning to completely do in the summer renovations of '18, but as luck would have it, it decided that it was done early. So had some repair companies come take a look at it, they said, you really, at this point, it's not worth, you know, we could sit and do a whole lot of, you know, spend a lot of money on repairing it just to replace it next summer. So we're going to move forward with what we would have, what we were planning to do anyway during the bond renovations during the summer of '18. We're going to replace this system at this time. So we're in a non-rushed mode of doing it, as well as we had the time to bid it out, et cetera. So we have for you the LMC AC unit at Webster and a recommendation to award to Contrast Mechanical, Macomb Township, Michigan. On that note, in my memo, I typed in Contract Mechanical. It's actually Contrast Mechanical. So just a, I blame it on autocorrect, but it certainly wasn't my phone that did it. But it is Contrast Mechanical. And the bid tab you can see is on the reverse side. We did have five different bids on this, and the lower responsible bidder is the Contrast Mechanical on Macomb for $27,500. And the plan is to have it installed and up and ready to go, well, if we ever end this warming season, but the presumption eventually will become winter and it'll be ready to go though for the spring season as we come up so that we have AC in the LMC as well as that computer lab. So right now, we're running temporary solutions. We put some window units into the lab to make sure that the computers were staying cool.
Questions, comments? Have we ever, Phil, have we ever worked with this contractor before?
Contrast, yeah, we've used in the district. Yes, yes.
All right, then we good to put this on?
Yeah, I'd request that for next, for next week.
Okay. President Burton, then that concludes building in sight.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item six, yes, item six, Policy Committee, and I will turn the meeting over to Mrs. Frank.
Thank you. We have several policy revisions that yourself will thank very much. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Oka.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Frank. We are pleased to bring to the board a number of, in general, cleanup items, although a couple of these involve a bit more than that. As you know, the board, a number of years ago, embarked on an extremely thorough review of all Board of Education policies. I believe we're in the neighborhood of about 640 pages of board policy. That is, those are the policies that govern all of our practices and behaviors within the school district. It is one of the main foundations of the work of our Board of Education. So as those policies have been reviewed, there were many policies which required perhaps just a change in wording or a change in title that is reflective either of current language, current law, or current practice. So as I shared with you in the update, as I included these in here, none of these changed the intent of the work of the district. Some of them come from our bylaws of the board and others from policies themselves. So what I'd like to do is just spend a moment on each of them. Literally, in some cases, the change may be of a word or two, but it does, number one, it does allow us to just be sure that the language is consistent. It also allows us to reflect that these policies have been recently reviewed or reviewed within the recent past, and we're able to update that date as well. So we are going to continue over the next number of months to bring to you a number of policies similar to this. And we will bring those directly to the committee meetings. Those that require more substantial discussion and review, for instance, we recently had a policy change with regard to JD, and we included alternatives to suspension and expulsion. So that required more dialogue on our part. So we discussed that in a study session, at a committee meeting, and then again went through the full process. These that are relatively cleanup language, we'd like to just bring to you a number of these policies and bring them directly to the committee meeting, and then they will go through both formal readings, first and second, at regular board meetings. So that just gives you a little bit of background. The first one is the bylaw of the board, A B C C. And this reflects, again, our current practice, that we have Board of Education elections every other year during even-year general elections, the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, and it indicates that the board members serve a term of four years. The term commences on January 1st of the year immediately following the election and will continue through December 31st of the fourth year. And so the wording on that just reflects current law and current practice. Any questions with regard to that? Okay. The second one is a bylaw of the board, which we are labeling A F C, with regard to emergency closings of schools. And so again, some very brief wording change. The second line, the second sentence of this policy will now state, "This can be accomplished through radio, television, phone, email, and the district website." So it really just updates the methods through which we get that information out to the community. And it also talks about school-wide emergencies versus system-wide emergencies. And it also, on item number two, "Should it become necessary for schools to be dismissed because of an emergency, the principals will be notified by administration." And so we utilize that as that umbrella term versus simply the superintendent's office. Okay? Any questions on that one? Yes.
I'm wondering if we should include social media, since we do send out messages now through Twitter and text and whatever.
We certainly can.
We certainly bring.
We certainly can. So would we, would you be comfortable if we added it after the word phone, email, social media, and the district website?
That'd be correct.
Do you add it?
Do you want that to be phone or phones?
Should be singular.
Singular. Okay, then we need to take out the S.
Yes.
And then email, would be just email? Take out the S.
I think, I think you could go either way because they may receive it via school and district, but I think if we just put email, that would be sufficient.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we, the last sentence there is, "School personnel should listen during questionable times for announcements." I stare up, just seems kind of like a weird word to me. Like, I mean, it could be, it could be a whole list of things, and we obviously don't want to list it out, but.
Potential. Potential might be better. Potential work better?
Well, because questionable times would be potential times.
We could take out that whole phrase and just say, "School personnel should listen for announcements of possible irregular scheduling."
Should they just listen or should they check in? Yeah, should you check in? Because if it's email, if it's social media, if it's the website, we also have the auto mobile calls.
I don't, I think that whole sentence is kind of weird because.
We could say, "School personnel will be notified of announcements of possible irregular schedules for school."
Yeah.
And parents, we're notifying parents also.
It says that.
Parents and students should be notified. This can be accomplished through a whole lot of stuff. School personnel, I would, I could live completely without that whole sentence.
Well, I think that the point of that sentence is not that the district will notify those in need of this information. The point of that last sentence is that there's an obligation on the part of the school personnel to be listening and to be, for it. Otherwise, it's covered in the first sentence.
Yeah, and I would assume that.
But I do think that it's important to have it there. I mean, that there's an obligation on both parts. There's an obligation on the part of the district to put forth this information, but there's also an obligation on the part of staff and parents to be listening for it during times of potential closure, or however we want to phrase it.
School personnel should be attentive to announcements of.
Will be notified for announcement, or will be notified of possible irregular schedules for school.
Well, we say that in the first sentence.
How about, the school personnel should.
Should be attentive to.
Should watch for announcements or look for announcements?
Be attentive to. That covers everything.
I like to be attentive to announcements of possible irregular schedules for school.
Attentive to?
Yeah, I just, the questionable times thing is distressing.
Sure. Well, and sometimes it's not a questionable time. Sometimes we have a strange power outage at one building because literally a squirrel chewed through the wire. That's not a questionable time, but you still need to be attentive to the fact that, you need to be, you know, you, it puts the obligation to on the part of the listener, on the staff and the families to be paying attention.
They should wait.
So school, well, school personnel and parents? Can we add, and parents?
What is the purpose of that last sentence?
Is that, I see the purpose of it as, there's an obligation on the part of our staff and our parents to be attentive to this, to be listening for these types of announcements.
So if there were the potential for a weather situation, for example, that they should wait for the announcements to be made and to listen for that?
To be, yeah, to be listening for that.
So we, maybe if we said that they should wait for the announcement, to my mind, it sounds like that sentence means that they shouldn't act until they have been told to act.
I see that, I see the point of the sentence being entirely different, that there's an obligation on your part to be paying attention to the fact that school might close, so that someone can't drive up to school, be they staff or parents, and say, well, no one told me. When, we only put it out there three or four ways. There's an obligation on the part of the district, which I think is covered in the first and second sentences, that here is how the district is obligated to cover notifying folks. The third sentence to me says, "As a listener, you have an obligation to tune in."
If that's the case, I think you would have to put school personnel and parents.
I agree with you, I agree with you, Mrs. Bradford.
If that's the intent of that statement.
I would like to see and parents added.
Can I complicate it anymore? Because if you're going to say, "School personnel, parents," and then you should say also and students and reiterate, if you're going to reiterate it all in the third sentence, it should, all three of them should be reiterated again.
True. I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, that would be right.
Especially with social media and stuff, the kids are all tuned in, they probably know before any of us do.
They do know a lot of that before we do.
Could we say parents and or guardians?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
In both sentences.
The last one for sure.
Well, it's yours.
Is it there? Okay. Yep. Yes, please.
In the first sentence, "In the event of emergency, in the event of emergency, should prevent schools from following the regular schedules, school personnel, parents, and students," how about will be notified instead of should be? Of course they should be.
They don't put too much pressure on us.
I think that would be a whole.
I could live with that either way.
I know you're like, it was supposed to be.
It was going to be so easy. And watch us go at it.
Nope, these are all great suggestions.
Okay, will you reread it is what we think.
In the event an emergency should prevent schools from following the regular schedules, school personnel, parent, and or guardian, and students will be notified. This can be accomplished through radio, television, phone, email, social media, and the district website. School personnel, parents and or guardians, and students shall be attentive to announcements of possible irregular schedules for school.
Yep.
That works. Yeah, that would sound.
Great.
Okay. That was a minor thing.
Yes.
Any other questions? Those are great suggestions. Some of these were reviewed a bit of time ago, so it's nice to be able to have an opportunity to take a look at that and see if that reflects current practice. Bylaw of the board, BGA, was reviewed back when these policies were initially reviewed a few years ago. One of the changes, additional changes that we would recommend is to simply remove the National School Board Association because our board, our district does renew membership annually for the Wayne County Association of School Boards and the Michigan Association of School Boards. However, we do not give the National School Board Association. So this reflects current practice. Question? Board policy, D F G, fiscal management, fees, payments, and rentals. Again, this is to reflect, if you also take a look concurrently at board policy, K G, so it's both D F G, and then if you move forward, another two policies, K G. The wording is reflected, they mirror in both of these policies. The rental of school property and use of buildings by outside agencies shall conform to school building use policies. That remains the same. Livonia Public Schools School District is permitted to charge appropriate fees for the use of its facilities. The first priority for the use of school property is for district purposes. So that just makes clear that, you know, as we have folks that want to come in and utilize our facilities, which we have welcomed the community to do for many years and we will continue to do in our new facilities, that the first priority established by the board and the district is for district purposes. So we will be cross-referencing on the bottom of that document, the other policy, K G. And so you will see, if I skip forward to that one, the community use of school facilities, that we utilize the same wording on that policy and that they reference one another. These are different sections, so rather than collapsing these into one, if folks are looking for this, one is under fiscal management and one is under general public relations. So it really does make sense, as we reviewed this, to keep those in both places and to simply cross-reference them. But we wanted them to be congruent with one another. Any questions on that? So snuggled in between is board policy, E B H, business management, leasing, and renting. And the only change on this is to change the cross-reference down below to reference both D F G and K G. So the intent of the policy is the same, it's just a reference. Board policy, K I, material distributions in schools. And we simply add, we've taken out the three words on the second sentence, "to carry home." So it simply says, "Only authorized information and materials are to be given to students." Rather than say, "to carry home," obviously. Rather than say to carry home, obviously, they head home in many different ways, and sometimes that may be given to them in various forms, and so we've just simply updated that policy to reflect current practice. And then the administrative procedure that goes along with that simply states Board policy establishes a cooperative working relationship, et cetera, rather than referencing, referencing policy LD. And again, we don't vote on administrative procedures, but that is notification from the Board of Education. Any questions? Okay. Yes. I'd like to go back to KI. Okay. Oh, you know what I'm saying? All right, let's see how close your hunch is. My only question is on the last sentence, only authorized information and materials are to be given to students. We're going to delete the to carry home. My concern is that to be given to students, because in this electronic communication age, sometimes things don't go to the student before they go home. They're sent directly home, and those materials should also have authorization or approval. So I would like to remove are to be given to students and simply say only authorized information and materials are to be distributed. They're concurrents on it?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay with that?
Yeah.
I like it.
I like it.
Okay, so that second sentence will read, only authorized information and materials are to be distributed. Board policy KM?
Nope.
Before we move on, administrative procedures, KI. The very last sentence, in addition, no new requests for permission to distribute materials will be honored, and so on. I would like to add the phrase pertaining to a ballot issue because that's what this specifically addresses. In addition, no new requests for permission to distribute materials pertaining to a ballot issue will be honored. Because they might want to distribute something about the soccer game, or a pepper rally. And this precludes everything.
Is that already covered in paragraph two? Is that clear, or no?
I don't think it is.
Well, this is not talking to, this is not talking about only ballot issue topics. This is saying anything that's going to be distributed in schools. But specifically, in the previous paragraphs, if it's related to an election, it has to be a non-political issue, or a non-political, uh, election, i.e. it has got to be a, a bond or a millage, as opposed to a political candidate. But this, this whole topic, this whole administrative procedure also covers things such as.
Newsletters?
Newsletter, soccer leagues, whatever the district has determined is appropriate to go home, unless I'm misreading this.
Except that it's newsletters and brochures provided by state and federal legislators, city and council, county officials.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, local.
So specifically political in nature. So, okay, so maybe not pertaining to a ballot issue. I just don't want to, to accidentally preclude sending any form of communication home just because it's within a certain time limit, close to an election. If you take a look at the first paragraph of this administrative procedure, it's specifically dealing with our working relationship between LPS and other governmental agencies. Relevant community groups, because we do have procedures governing the process by which we approve flyer distribution, et cetera. This is specific to local governments, county agencies, and state and federal governments. So I don't believe this would preclude a group such as that of asking for that to be distributed.
Is it just the title that's maybe misleading to you then?
That general public relations, distribution of materials in schools? Do we need to change that? The title of it? Because it just says distribut, distribution of materials. It doesn't say what kind of materials.
Or we could say no new governmental request of permission to distribute materials.
But the title makes it seem like it's any material.
Right, and that's my concern about that sentence. That sentence makes it seem like it's any material. When really we're talking about requests, the governmental requests for, for their materials.
Or we could say distribute materials from a governmental agency.
That works.
Well, and again, this is a, this is an administrative procedure, right? This isn't a policy. Somebody can't come and ding us for this. This is just, this is how we do things, and these are our practices. This is not a policy that, that they're going to come and.
And along that line, you're right, it's, seeing it's administrative procedures, it's not up to the Board anyway. This is just, this is just for our information.
Specific to local governmental agencies.
Right.
This entire administrative procedure, if, if you want us to reiterate that, that's stated in the first and second paragraph. We could certainly reiterate it in the third, but the intent is to cover materials from local governmental agencies.
I think for this.
But it's.
I've got a, I've got a suggestion that might help. You've already described in paragraph two the materials that you're talking about. So if you change the last sentence to say, in addition, no new requests for permission to distribute materials as described above will be honored. If it's received six months or less from the date, you've already described them.
Okay, I like that.
Let's not reinvent the wheel.
I like that very well.
Yep.
Just, I think it's a slippery slope if we start rewriting the administrative procedures.
I agree with you. This is not ours to do.
This is fine if we want to just, on this one item, but yeah, this is not our issue.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, administrative procedures are for Board information only.
We are stepping out of our swim lane.
Yep. You guys do it every while, I guess.
We can get me to edit this part of the law. Because I think that reflects either paragraph one or two.
Yep.
Because it's stated in both.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying that we shouldn't voice our opinion or, or provide feedback if that's what we need, but as part of a Board discussion, I think we want to be a little bit careful about how much time and control we spend on administrative procedures since they are not in our bailiwick, or in our.
I agree.
In our zone.
All right, we are going to move on to Board policy KM. This simply reflects, it refers to, this is, refers to visits to schools, so when folks come to our schools, what are the processes, procedures, and overall the messages? We welcome visitors, but for the health, safety, and welfare of the students, they shall report to the main office. So it previously stated the principal's office, and in general, it makes most sense to refer to that as the main office. And just to be consistent with the language that we've used on Board policy, we've used superintendent or his or her designee on all of these, rather than making it one or the other so we don't have to go back and change for the future. So on Board motions, we utilize her as reference to current day, but because these policies are meant to last for many years. As we update policies, we've also updated that reference. And the third paragraph just adds the word building principal or administrator, and that they should be arranged in advance. So again, just a few minor updates here. This is what happens when I read these out. The, the change from principal's office to main office, I'd like to insert the word schools just on that, so it's the school's main office. So that we avoid any potential confusion and have people come to the district's main office. Okay?
Sure.
Well, and it said principal. There's no principal in the district level, so it's pretty clear.
It, it is, not to jump, but it is visits to schools, but.
It does say, yeah, visits to schools. I mean, it does welcome in the schools. Right, that they register at the district's main office, so they might be confused.
Go ahead with the problem, but.
The third paragraph? Is that an intentional editor of crossing the word and?
Yeah.
Yes, because we have and following in the next section, and must not disrupt the educational process. So there are three pieces. They must have the approval of the building administrator, should be arranged in advance, and must not disrupt the educational process.
I would suggest then, because it doesn't read correctly with the commas, to make those semitones after administrator and after the word advance.
They're not, they're not semitones.
Or something. Because the way, I'm saying, with the, the way it's written with the commas, it reads, to me, it doesn't read correctly. It's, 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 I'm thinking it just didn't read correctly.
You're right. You're right.
How about if.
Camera should be gone.
That was one of the things we said. The principal administrator, comma, should be arranged in advance. And must not disrupt the educational. Oh, correct. Yeah. Principal administrator arranged in advance.
Oh, arranged. Did it take out should be?
Oh. Oh, I see what Keith is saying.
Yeah, should be doesn't need to be in there, right?
Yes, you could cross out the word should be as well.
In the comma.
After administrator.
I can live with that.
I think it still needs a comma.
No, you don't. I, I see what Keith's saying. It's all one thing if he, he's saying the approval of the building administrator. Arrange in advance.
I thought meeting was.
And must.
Those may be separate actions. Arrange in advance may be through the school secretary or a counselor, someone else, so they would have approval of the building administrator, and then also arrange in advance and do not disrupt the instructional process.
Would it be, would it be better to say visits to classrooms by parents and other citizens must be arranged in advance? And had, and then comma, have approval of the building principal administrator, and must not disrupt? I mean, could you switch, swap those? Would that sound better, or it doesn't matter? Visits to classrooms by parents and other citizens must be arranged in advance, have the approval of the building principal slash administrator, comma, and must not disrupt the educational process.
You could take out that whole section, though. The whole, like, three section. Other citizens must be arranged in advance with the, with the approval of the building administrator, and then your other piece, and should, and must not disrupt it, so it's just two pieces. Right?
That's where Keith was getting that to begin with.
Right.
It was just two pieces.
It could be arranged in advance with the teacher. So that's a whole separate thing from the principal administrator.
That would still be, if, that would still be with the approval of the, if, if a teacher's got the authority to schedule that, that's with the approval of their building administrator.
Keith, there's a problem. We can certainly. I think there are three parts to this, so I think we just want to be sure that we're communicating that there are those three elements that should be present. So really, the order of those can certainly reflect the suggestions made.
To me, it doesn't matter what order they go in, because all three parts are mandatory.
Right.
I just thought it flowed better the other way.
To have the arrange in advance first?
If you read, if you're reading it, to me, it flows better.
But make that one piece arrange in advance with the building administrator.
But that's not.
No.
That now requires the principal or administrator to have arranged it in advance. It could be a teacher, it could be a secretary, it could be anybody in the building. When you link those two, you've married the principal to be required to arrange it.
Yeah, scheduling the meeting.
They are three distinct actions. Which is what, I mean, at least it was meant to be originally three distinct actions. You just need to have it arranged with somebody.
Advance and then.
You need to have the principal say this is okay, and it has to be not disruptive, hence there's just three different pieces. As soon as you marry something, you're requiring that, that individual to be the approver.
So why don't we say visits to classrooms by parents and other citizens should be arranged in advance, comma, have the approval of the building administrator, principal, comma, and not disrupt the educational process.
I think that's.
Do you want to say should be, or must be arranged in advance? I think we could say on that piece should be arranged in advance.
Yep.
That reads well. Okay.
I like it.
I like that.
Yeah, it's probably the order that it needs to go in anyway.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I think so.
Okay? We have Board policy KN. General public relations, public complaints. And so this was a change that was recommended during prior review. It previously stated, the Board of Education believes that complaints, including those concerning instructional matters, et cetera, et cetera. So it simply would just start with the word complaints, including those concerning instructional matters and employees, are best handled and resolved as close to their origins possible. So it simply goes beyond stating just that the Board of Education believes, so just as a district. We believe that.
I believe.
You know, that.
Yep.
That those are best handled and resolved as close to their origins. Anything else on that one? Okay. Board policy LDAJA. So the wording on this, I was going to say was mild, was changed with minor revisions, but and it, this really refers to the security footage, so it was previously entitled camera videotape retention. The intent of this is simply to say that security footage is either kept, used, or routinely erased as determined by administration. That's the general gist of it. So as we've talked about, for instance, with our bus cameras, the SD card maintains about 30 days. Is that correct?
Yes.
Of footage, and then that becomes routinely erased. We know that those can be kept and copied and secured if we needed to, to take out a certain portion of that. However, those may not be kept, those are not kept in perpetuity. We also added that the security cameras do not just refer to school buildings, but those on our buses as well, because those are now equipped with the cameras. And then we referred to footage rather than a tape. So just reflecting more current day utilization. And then it simply says, the last sentence, signs will be posted notifying the public that school premises are monitored by cameras. Simply cameras rather than video cameras. Yes?
We also have security in other areas that are not technically our buildings, such as our, we may have them on our, in our athletic areas, in our parking areas, et cetera. Should, would we, would we be better to replace the word buildings with facilities? Or school premises or school property?
Premises. Isn't, just a question, isn't, aren't the premises usually the land that a building is on? Would that encompass it by saying?
I think so.
So it says the, they may be present on the premises of school buildings.
So that would encompass.
So I think that, that encompasses the property.
I think you're right.
Oh, I see what you mean, but the word premises appears before it already anyway.
So if it's on a field, or if it's in the annex, or if it's on the parking lot, which it could be in, you know, in those places. It's on the premises.
The building is just part of.
Right.
Okay.
What I, I think, what, something that might capture, that might capture President Burton is if we put facilities instead of buildings, could include district facilities. So I think if we utilize the word facilities there, it does indeed say premises, so I believe that would cover, as Mr. Francis said, the land surrounding, but I, I do like the, actually, the swap of the word facilities versus buildings in this case.
Because the facilities would be a field or a lot, I mean, you're, between premises and facilities, you're covering everything.
Sure.
Right.
Can we have any security cameras and premises that are not scheduled in services?
We probably have them. We probably have them in a variety of areas that we really can't even disclose all of, but for security purposes.
I think premises of school facilities should, should cover us pretty well.
Mm-hmm.
Premises of school facilities should cover us pretty well.
Right, and that, and that would cover us with anything we have now and into the future. And the idea is, we can have our, our security cameras wherever we see fit.
Yeah.
Yes.
Technically legally, it's, yeah.
Even if it's just grass, it's our, it's our premises.
Our grass.
Even if it's in a school building, there?
Yeah, it's
Right.
It's school property.
And, and again, the policy is designed to not just cover today, but policy is designed to be broad and, and reaching into the foreseeable needs of the future. So I would rather have this be broad and cover any school properties without designating which school, you know, which, which ones we do now, or tomorrow, or the next day.
Here's the way you do it. It'd say, security cameras may be present on school district premises and buses. Then include, then you're including every premise that the school district owns, whether there's a building on it, or whether it's
Okay, so present on, say, here?
I can't.
School district premises.
School district premises. That is a nice way to encapsulate it, because a field would still be a school district, the premises of the school district. Google agrees, by the way.
This is a question for Mark.
Uh-oh.
Um
I didn't do it.
Do we need to, it says cameras, do we need to worry about, because on the buses, we have audio. Do the cameras cover audio, or does that need to be mentioned?
Let's say it's security cameras, that's the
We do.
But is that the assumption that there's audio attached to it? I, I don't know
We never
I don't know if the, that's why I'm asking. If it doesn't make a difference, I don't want to monkey around with it, but it's just something that popped in my head.
You can't have one, you really can't have one without the other, so
Okay.
Unless you can, can you isolate the, the audio from it, Steve?
You can't isolate them, but our security cameras are video only, or must cameras or both.
Did you want to use, I heard you mumble this, recording devices somewhere in here?
I'm just, will we refer to the first sentence to security cameras?
Or recording devices? Would you add that in there?
No.
So what you're saying, some of the, some of the cameras just have video, and some have video and audio.
They're all security.
They're all security cameras, I don't think you
Okay, I don't want to start
We have none that are just audio, which is what I think recording devices would refer to, so I think if we say security cameras, that would cover both of those.
Just popped in my head, I just, but I don't want to complicate things that we don't need to.
Okay. So I'm making the change in the first sentence to read, in the interest of the safety and the security of individuals and property, security cameras may be present on school district premises and buses. Okay? Great, thank you. One more.
You thought this was going to be quick.
Board policy MK, educational accreditation and agency relations. This simply reflects that we no longer use North Central Association of Colleges and Schools for our accreditation, and we also go beyond the senior high schools in our district. So it now states, Livonia Public Schools School District will maintain accreditation status through advanced ads or a current accreditation provider. Next year? Next year is our big decision.
Already?
Yep.
Can you believe that?
I'm fine.
Anything else on policy?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Are we outside?
We can make some stuff up.
That wraps it. Oh, do you have one more?
Actually, I would like to give one huge shout-out to Mrs. Wozniak, who is the secretary for the superintendent and the Board of Education, because this sounds like quick little changes here and there, but each one of these policies is, has to be handled independently, and uploaded independently, and they are very cumbersome. And it needs to be independently, so that we can, we can monitor and change each one separate from the entire 600 and some odd page document. But she has put an enormous amount of time into this work over the last few years, and it needs to be recognized, and thank you very, very much. It's, we've, we've made enormous progress on it. But the, the work of the board is only one step of, of getting all of this, all of this finished, but thank you very much, Mrs. Wozniak.
Are we ready for first reading of that?
Yes, we'd be ready for first reading on all of those policies. And not the administrative procedures, because we don't approve administrative procedures.
So we'll have the updated policies reflecting the changes in your packet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item on our agenda is item seven, Personnel Committee, Mr. Centers. Do you have anything?
I have it.
Mrs. Oakley?
We do not.
All right. The next item is item eight, Legislative Committee. Mrs. Jarvis, do you have anything to add?
No, we're forward.
Nothing, all right.
We do not.
All righty. I have one other quick correction that I need to make. At our last meeting, I stated that our senior citizens have free entry into our sporting events and our theater performances, and I was corrected on that. I thought that was the case, and I was mistaken. Our senior citizens do have free entry into our athletic competitions. However, the same does not hold true due to costs associated with our, our performing arts. So I would like to make that correction, and I apologize if that caused confusion for anybody. That was entirely my mistake. Is there anything else that we have before we close out our meeting this evening? No? Come, we have come to the end of our agenda. I wish you all a great evening, and we hope to catch you next week at our general meeting. Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.